Hello and good evening. Thanks for joining me again for our study in Paul's Letter to the Romans, the letter that changed the world this evening. If you've been with me all the way along, maybe if you haven't, this is session nine. And we're going to get into, we've done so much of the bad news of the gospel, which we have to do, but tonight we're going to get into the really good news of the gospel. And so with that said, let's pray and we'll dive right into it. Again, I'm really glad you're with me tonight. I should also say, because we double track these, if you're seeing this on Sunday morning, then thank you for joining me Sunday morning as well. I know it's, I'm in two places at once. It's a wrinkle in the time-space continuum, but it's something we pastors do. We're not allowed to talk about anymore. So enough of that, let's pray. Father, thank you for this opportunity to study your word. Your word is truth. I ask that you now sanctify us, set us apart for your purposes in this study of your word. Lord, thank you for your servant Paul. Thank you for the brilliance of what he has left us under the inspiration of your Holy Spirit. And Lord, help us just get just a little, just a little of the depth of what Paul has to say here in chapter three, verses 21 through 31. For I ask it in Christ's name. Amen. Amen. All right, we are in chapter three, verse 21 through 31, as I've said about three times now. And just to keep you on target, if you've been with me all along, this is the part, this is where we are in the outline that I set out the very first introduction to the study. Verses one through 15 of chapter one, he introduces the letter, verses 16 to 17, to the theme of the overture. The one who is righteous by faith shall live. And now he begins his exposition or explanation of the rest of the letter. The one who is righteous by faith, which we're looking at now from chapter one, verse 18, on through the end of chapter four. And with that, let's read what Paul says here in chapter three, starting in verse 21. But now apart from the law, the righteousness of God has been manifested, being witnessed by the law and the prophets, even the righteousness of God through faith in Jesus Christ for all those who believe. For there is no distinction, for all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God, being justified as a gift by his grace through the redemption, which is in Christ Jesus, whom God displayed publicly as a propitiation in his blood through faith. Don't worry, I'm going to unpack a lot of these terms for you. This was to demonstrate his righteousness, because in the forbearance of God, he passed over the sins previously committed, for the demonstration, I say, of his righteousness at the present time, so that he would be just and the justifier of the one who has faith in Jesus. Where then is boasting? It is excluded. By what kind of law? Works? No, but by a law of faith. For we maintain that a man is justified by faith apart from works of the law. Or is God the God of Jews only? Is he not the God of Gentiles also? Yes, of Gentiles also, since indeed God who will justify the circumcised by faith and the uncircumcised through faith is one. Do we then nullify the law through faith? May it never be. On the contrary, we establish the law. And I read through that fairly quickly. Again, I'm sorry about the congestion, it's allergies to something. Again, my suspicion is allergies to highly, highly spiritual people. So at least one of you out there is really messing me up. And if you just go and do a little sinning soon, my voice could clear. I'm kidding, just kidding. I'm allergic to something and I'm not sure what it is, and so I just gotta live with it, but I'll just try and power through as best I can. So I read through that fairly quickly and would remind you again, I'm reading from the New American Standard Version, which is not very new anymore, but it's the Bible I grew up as a Christian on, so I still prefer it for the clarity of the language, even if it's not the most fluid and reader-friendly. But read through it, read along with me, whatever translation you've got that helps make sense of it to you, I'm pleased for that. I read it fairly quickly, but I really should have stopped at the first two words in English. But now, but now, after all the bad news, and we've had a truckload of it, from chapter one, verse 18, all the way up to chapter three, verse 20. It's just almost non-stop, dark clouds and gloom and doom. I mean, it's really bad. All men everywhere are under, and women and young people, we're all under condemnation. Jews are, Gentiles are, everybody's under condemnation. And you begin to say, okay, Paul, I think we got it. I feel like I've got a spiritual and theological elephant stepping on my chest. Would you mind getting this beast's weight off of me? And Paul says, I got you. That's exactly where I want you to be, so I want you to be saying, please, give me some good news, because here it is, here's the good news. But now, these are two of the most beautiful words in all of Paul's Letter to the Romans, and he'll repeat them several times. Two of the most beautiful words in all of the New Testament, two of the most beautiful words in the entire Bible, two of the most beautiful words in anywhere to be found, anywhere to be found at all. Tim Keller, again, no relation. And just as a reminder again, if you're new to this study, Tim is a great brother in Christ, a great thinker, writer, former pastor, now I think he's pastor emeritus of Redeemer, Presbyterian in Manhattan, the church he helped plant. He's been diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. So every time you hear me mention his name, I hope it'll be a reminder to you, say a prayer for him, for him and his wife Kathy, that Tim will be one of the fairly small percentage of people who survive pancreatic cancer. But here's what Tim Keller says about it. For the first time in history, and the last, an unheard-of approach that God has been revealed. This is the uniqueness of the Christian gospel, and it reverses what every other religion and worldview and even every human heart believes. It's such a radical departure. But now, but now, again, for the first time, something brand-new, something that the world hasn't seen before, no other religion has promulgated before, human heart doesn't really believe either. Francis Schaeffer says, in a way, this phrase and the verses that surround it constitute the center of the whole Bible, for they answer the most profound of all questions. How can God remain the absolutely just ruler of the universe and yet justify me, an ungodly And then a theologian whose commentary I look at a lot, Douglas Moo, and yes, that is his name, Douglas Moo says this. Rarely does the Bible bring together in so few verses so many important theological ideas. The righteousness of God, justification, the shift in salvation history, faith, sin, redemption, grace, propitiation, forgiveness, and the justice of God. All that, all that packed into these 10 verses, especially these first six verses of Romans, chapter three, verse 21 through 26. And it all begins with those beautiful words, but now, signifying a major, major shift, not only in Paul's letter, but in, as the writers have just quoted, mentioned. And again, one of the things I like to do in the study is introduce you to some great thinkers and writers, and hopefully get you to be interested in what they have to say, so you'll pursue their writings a little further. Where was I? But this signals a brand-new shift in redemptive history, in human history, and for each and every individual human heart, there's been a major transition point here, all beginning with those beautiful little words, but now. You should know, and this gets a little technical, but you can hang with me, you're smarter than the average fill-in-blank Christian. You should know that almost everything in the Letter to the Romans up to now has been in the past tense. If you're a Greek scholar, and there's probably one or two of you out there, it's in the Aorist. Almost everything up to this point has been in the past tense. But now, Paul has made his case that, again, all people everywhere are under just condemnation from God. But now, everything changes to present, and again, if you're a grammarian or a Greek scholar, present and perfect tense, now everything changes and shifts into present focus, present ongoing focus. The gospel, there's a reason for the shift in verb tense this year. The gospel is rooted in history, time and space and history. These things happen in and through the lives of these people. These are real human beings. They're not mythical or mythological. They're not mere legends. There's such a thing as a true legend and a true myth. These people are not fictional. They really, they really existed, they really did and said these things. God really worked in and through them to accomplish these things. Our faith, excuse me, again, our faith is not simply a matter of philosophy or even theology. It is those, but it's a matter of history. It's a matter of acts and facts. That's why you hear throughout the Scripture, thus saith the Lord. And you see so often, especially in the older Testament, but at least occasionally the new, you see so often a rehearsal of the great acts of God, demonstration of his power through signs and wonders and miracles in the lives of his people, the old covenant people of Israel, and then the new covenant people, the church and the individuals involved. Our faith is not simply a matter of only a belief system, it certainly is that. It's a matter of history, of acts and facts. These things really happen, and you can count on them, you can trust them to be true, true history. But now, Paul says, but now, something new has happened that hasn't ever happened before. And what he's, what he's spelling out here in these first three chapters of Romans is something that you know intuitively, and if you've studied world history or world religions or just talked to people from different walks of life, you know this to be true. It is the default drive assumption, it is the basic default operating system of the human heart to believe that whatever your concept of God, whether you are one of the, a member of one of the monotheistic faiths, belief in one God, which is Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, doing them chronologically in the way that they occur in the world in history, monotheistic faith, like Judaism, Christianity, or Islam, or a polytheistic faith, like Hinduism and all the various offshoots of Hinduism, all the Eastern mysticisms, or spiritism, animism, whatever your conception of God, of a supreme being or beings, it is the default drive assumption, operating system of every human being all over the planet, that the way to please that God or those gods, gods and goddesses maybe, the way to be in right relationship with your God or gods and goddesses is through works of righteousness on your part, to do certain good works, to avoid certain sins, to bring forth acts of penance. That's why you see in every religious system, every faith tradition of the world, you see some, some belief in acts of sacrifice. There's a sacrificial system of some kind. Again, if you're a Christian or even just a Bible reader, you know that the old covenant people of Israel had a very elaborate system of sacrifices. They were supposed to bring to God either in the tabernacle or in the wilderness or then the temple, once it was built. You're supposed to make sacrifices to God at certain times, certain feasts, certain high holy days and so forth. That goes on in every other faith system all over the world. Some, some system of sacrifices, something you have to do and or not do in order to be made right with your God or gods and goddesses, your creator or your superior, your supreme beings. Paul says, this all changes right here, right now, in the person of Jesus Christ. Everything changes, and this is something the world has not seen before. This is how, this is what happened with Paul. As I mentioned to you before, and you can read this story in Acts, chapter nine, he was a persecutor of the church. He was probably public enemy number one to Christians in and around Rome and the near Roman Empire, moving on to various cities where there are brand-new outcroppings of Christians. At that time, they were just considered a sect of Judaism, sometimes called the Way. And Paul was going out to persecute them, and then Christ intercepts him on his way to Damascus to persecute Christians, and says, Paul, at that time his name's Saul, says, who do you think you're persecuting? You're persecuting me, why are you doing that? Saul blinds Paul, and blinds Saul, who undergoes a very dramatic conversion, before we talk about Damascus sort of experiences. And Saul becomes, from the great persecutor of the church, he becomes the apostle Paul in most ways, the most important, most influential of the apostles of Jesus Christ. Saul was as Jewish as you could be, by family, by his observance of the law and so forth, by his education, he was a Pharisee. Saul had tried as hard as anybody ever to please God through his own acts of righteousness and his keeping with the sacrificial system, his observance of law, and it got him precisely nowhere. And he absolutely despaired of ever being able to please God that way. You can read about this in Philippians, chapter three. And this way, his experience is parallel to Martin Luther's. Martin Luther tried so hard, and let me also add, as I always do when I talk about Luther, he was a great man in many ways, he was a horrible man in many ways. You kind of have to take Luther's life in two different chapters, well, three different chapters, before he becomes a Christian, during his good years, and then his last chapter, which is just awful, and don't make any excuse for that. But when he was in his better days, he helped change the world in some really good ways. And we're all, look, we're all a mix of good and bad. Most of us don't have the incredibly strong proclivities both ways that people like Paul and Martin Luther had, but we're all, we're all a mix of good and bad, of righteousness and sin. We're all works in progress. Martin Luther tried really, really hard to please God by obeying what he thought God wanted him to do, by acts of penance, and it got him precisely nowhere. He was spared of ever being able to please God, it made him actually hate God. And then he had a dramatic conversion too, by reading this letter to the Romans. And so Paul's, Paul's experience, parallel Luther's experience, people who tried really hard to please God, and even today, a lot of us who are Christians, maybe we've been Christians for many years, we still sort of have this sneaking suspicion that if we're really good, we can really score some points with God, maybe he'll like us just a little bit better, right? Let's get a few bonus points with God. We wouldn't say that out loud, maybe, but sort of still down in there for a lot of us. Some people say that the last idol that has to be killed off is our own self-righteousness, our own righteousness. I know I've told my congregation this story many times, but bear with me while I tell it to those of you who aren't part of my congregation. First of all, why aren't you? Anyway, Brian Chappell, when he was president at Covenant Theological Seminary, where I did one of my degrees, Dr. Chappell told a story more than once of preaching in a church, and he preached grace, he preached grace, he preached grace, it's grace not works, grace not works, grace not works. And we got done preaching, people were thanking him for the great message and all that, and the church organist came over to him and said, that's a very good sermon, young man, very good, it's all well and good, but I've been playing the organ in this church for 19 years, and that's got to count for something. We can laugh at her, and we should really, the idea that playing the organ for 19 years should score some bonus points with God, score some bonus points with me, anybody can do that for that long. And in God's eyes, it doesn't add anything, doesn't add anything to our salvation, our sanctification. So Paul says, there's no distinction, verses 22 and 20, all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God. All of us, every single one of us, the most saintly godly person you know, other than me, of course, your own dear mother, whoever, depending on your persuasion, maybe you thought it was Billy Graham, maybe you thought it was Mother Teresa, maybe you think it's the Pope, whoever you think is the godliest person you know, falls short of the glory of God. I use an analogy, I think two or three Wednesday nights ago, about me and Carl Lewis on the best days of our lives trying to jump the Grand Canyon. He's going to get a lot further across the canyon than I am, but he's still going to fall so far short of the other side, he's going to fall to his death just like I will. Just take him a little longer. Let me tweak my analogy. Since my good buddy Jerry Reed, excuse me, Dr. Reed, he makes me call him that now, these guys are doctors. Since he's always taken some liberties from me, let me have one with him. If Jerry Reed and I go out to dunk a basketball, he's going to get a lot closer to it than I am. But neither one of us is going to be able to dunk a basketball, and on the best days of our lives, we couldn't do that. Sneaking suspicion. He's about four inches taller than I am, and I think on the best day of my life, I might have gotten closer. I don't know that, but anyway, neither one of us could ever dunk. We sure couldn't do it now. So does it really matter how much you fall short of the rim at 10 feet? No, neither one of us can do it. You can't please God on your own. Now, like I say, stop trying, stop trying to impress him, score bonus points. Please God because you want to please God, not because you think you're going to score some points with God. It's interesting, the concept of sin, you use that word in most conversations today, and people look at you like, what? What kind of a relic are you? What kind of an artifact are you? What cave did you just emerge from? Sin, and yet, and yet, surveys show us that even still to this day, about two-thirds of Americans, I'm only speaking about people in this country, ask God for forgiveness for specific sins. They might not call it that, but they ask God's forgiveness for specific sins that they commit and have committed. Three-fourths will tell you, if you ask them one-on-one, they don't think sin is an outdated notion. They might use other words, but they don't think it's an outdated notion. Last time I checked this, it's been a while, but 86% of baby boomers, I am one, okay, all you younger people, okay boomer, yeah, I got it. 86% of my generation think that sin is still very much a relevant concept. And then we talk about falling short of the glory of God, all sinning falls short of God's glory. Well, God's glory is first and foremost, first and foremost, it's the most important thing. You're important. Human beings are extremely important, extraordinarily important, but we're not the most important things. Even our salvation is not the most important thing. Most important thing is the glory of God. That's why if you are reformed, even if you're not, you may know that the first question in Westminster Shorter Catechism, question one is, what is the chief end of man? Or modern translation might be, modern rendition might be, what is man's chief purpose? Being kind broadly defined. It's to glorify God and enjoy him forever, to glorify God and enjoy him forever. What's your purpose in this life? To bring God glory and to enjoy him while you do it, however he's called you to do, whatever your particular calling is. Most important thing is to glorify God. God's glory is, first of all, his own awesome presence. But the Bible also teaches that we are to share in his glory, because we will be glorified, we will be glorified, after we have been justified and adopted into his family and sanctified, in other words, made more and more like Christ, and at some point, we become glorified. I don't know what that's going to look like. We get a little glimpse of it, maybe, when you see the resurrected Christ after the crucifixion and death, his resurrected body, we get some glimpse of it, maybe some other glimpses, maybe in the revelation, but really, we don't, I don't think we have a point of reference for it, but just know it's going to be just incredible, incredible. We'll know each other, we will know each other in a glorified state, but we're going to look at each other and say, not that, boy, that's the best, best you ever looked, no, it's going to be better than you've ever looked, it's going to be better than you've ever been. And I don't have a death wish, I don't want to get there tonight, but excuse me again, I'm looking forward to what that glorified state is going to be like. So we are created in the image of God. That is our glory. We are created as God's image bearers. We are the closest thing he ever created to a self-portrait. In all the created universe, God looked at human beings and he made us to be the closest thing to himself in all the universe. When he looks at us, he says, more than anything else in this world, more than anything else in the universe, to my knowledge anyway, you remind me of me. It's incredible how we reflect his glory and his majesty more than anything else. Now, that is, that is, again, that is our glory. Shame of it is, what we have done with that image of God, we've allowed his image to be distorted, to be defaced, to be vandalized, if you will, by the sins that we have committed and also by the sins that others have committed against us. I read a magnificent biography of Leonardo da Vinci a couple of years ago by Walter Isaacson. If you like biographies, man, is it good. I knew Da Vinci was a genius, but man, I really didn't know what kind of genius he was. Probably the greatest artist the world has ever produced. You art majors can correct me if you want, but I don't care. I think he was probably the greatest artist. And his Mona Lisa is widely considered not only the most famous, but the best painting in the history of the world. And it would be as if someone went into the Louvre and somehow, some way, got past all the security and scattered mud all over the Mona Lisa, defaced it. I mean, what a crime that would be, right? Then the thing you'd hope would be that someone would come along, be able to wipe away the filth and the mud, restore the Mona Lisa to its former glory. I mean, it's already faded, we know that. Best of all would be if Da Vinci himself would come back and say, now, he never, he was notorious for not finishing things and going back to them time and time and time again. He might look at the Mona Lisa now and say, I can do better than that. But best of all would be if Da Vinci himself could come back and say, let me, let me wipe away the filth and restore this painting the way I intended it to be. That's what God does for us in Christ. We are his glory, his crowning creation, his image bearer, we reflect him. But the sins we've committed and others committed against us have defaced us and have vandalized us. And life is a process, the Christian life is a process in many ways, with God beginning to wipe away the filth and the grime that we've put on ourselves and others have put on us, and saying, let me restore you to what I intended you to be when I created you. And do it through the agency of Christ. Then Paul uses this word in verse 24, redemption, redemption. Again, for you Greek scholars, it's apalutrosios. It's a word that was used of a ransom paid to buy back a prison of war or to buy a slave out of captivity and give him his freedom. This redemption was a purchase price that was given for someone else in captivity. The idea that our justification, our being made right in God's eyes, comes through faith in Christ alone and not by works, I think would be analogous to imagine yourself taken prisoner and chained to the wall of your cell, and you're in darkness, and you're alone. And maybe at first, depending on who you are and what your state of being is at the time, physically and mentally, maybe at first, you think, and I can, I will break free these chains, I will get myself out of here, I will, I will break these chains and get out of here, no matter what it takes. And you try, and you try, and you try, and you pull, and all you succeed in doing is just mangling your hands and your wrists and making yourself bloody, and you get nowhere. Try and try and try, and over time, you finally despair of ever, ever getting out of that prison cell, ever breaking through those chains. And then one day, the door of your prison cell opens and the light comes flooding in, and in walks a man who's got the key, and he unchains you, he unlocks your chains, he sets you free, and on the way out, just for good measure... And on the way out, just for good measure, he rips the door off that prison cell and says, this never needs to hold you or anybody else ever again. Now, if that were the situation, there are people in this world who are, who have been through captivity like that, and they can speak to this much better than I can. But if that were to happen to you, you would spend the rest of your life being extraordinarily grateful to the person who came and set you free. You would be indebted to him or her. You'd wanna spend the rest of your life singing that person's praises. And keep in mind, you added nothing to your liberation. You added nothing to your freedom, other than a desire not to be a captive anymore. And that's where this analogy breaks down, because according to the Bible, even to desire to be made free of our own captivity, of our own sins, even that is an act of God. On our own, we don't have it, because we're dead in our trespasses and sins. We're not just chained to a wall in a cell in darkness, we're actually dead and in the ground. Dead people don't make many requests for freedom. So, Christ comes to our cell, He comes to our grave, and He liberates us. And we don't bring anything to the party except a desire to be free, a desire to be made alive again. And even that has to be a gift of God's grace. So, this is not, I realize, a typical evangelical, typical Christian notion, at least in this country, of what happens in our salvation, our justification. I think in this country, anyway, and it's really the only one I know well enough to speak about, I think in this country, we have an idea of our salvation, well, you know, I got my sins, I'm not perfect, wink, wink, but, you know, I'm not the worst guy around, I know plenty of people who are worse than me. Some people are better, too, but I'm probably just as good as you are, better than most. And what I really need is just a little tweak here, a little mid-flight correction there, and maybe I'll start going to church a little more, and cut down on my cussing and so forth, then, you know, I'm good with God. That is not the biblical picture of salvation, not at all. Nope. Biblical picture of salvation is, you're chained to the wall of your cell, and completely powerless to break free. You are dead in your sins, completely powerless to do anything about it. And Christ has to come along and set us free through the power of His sacrificial death and resurrection. And then in verse 25, then he talks about, Paul says, Christ whom God displayed public as a propitiation in His blood through faith. All right, the Greek word here that we translate, propitiation, I'm gonna explain it in a minute, is hila sterion. Hila sterion is used to translate the Hebrew word from the Old Testament. I talk like I really know my languages. I'm telling you what I can remember right now. The Hebrew word for the Old Testament, kaphorith, kaphorith. You don't know that word unless you are Jewish and really a good Hebrew student. But it is the same root as the word kippur, as in yom kippur, the day of atonement. And it comes to us from that very, very idea of yom kippur, the day of atonement. And it refers to that kaphorith, that kippur, it refers to something that you are familiar with. I assume you are familiar with, because you've probably seen Raiders of the Lost Ark at least twenty times, and you know what the Ark of the Covenant was supposed to look like. Obviously, this is an artist's rendition, we know that, we haven't seen it, it's in that warehouse in Washington DC. I'm kidding, we have no idea where the Ark of the Covenant really is, if it even still exists, which I personally doubt. But if it does exist, it's buried somewhere, Mount Nebo or somewhere, we don't know, right? I know there's a little chapel in Ethiopia where they say it is, and I doubt it. Anyway, this is the Ark of the Covenant, an artist's rendition of it. This next picture gives you a little different view of it. And that, what you see there on the top of it, where those winged creatures are, that is the mercy seat. That is the mercy seat. And I'm gonna take just a little bit of time here to give you the Old Testament background of this. It's found in Leviticus, chapter 16, and you can read it from verses 6 through 22. I'm only gonna read verses 6 through 10 to here. Then Aaron, this is what happens on yom kippur, the day of atonement, one day of the year. Then Aaron shall take the bull for the sin offering, which is for himself, that he may make atonement for himself and for his household. And he shall take the two goats and present them before the Lord at the door of the tent of meeting. Aaron shall cast lots for the two goats, one lot for the Lord and the other lot for the scapegoat. Then Aaron shall offer the goat on which the lot for the Lord fell and make it a sin offering. But the goat on which the lot for the scapegoat fell shall be presented alive before the Lord to make atonement upon it, to send it into the wilderness as the scapegoat. And by the way, this is exactly where we get that word scapegoat. It's from, again, the Hebrew word is azazel, A-Z-A-Z-E-L, we'd render it. And it means exactly that scapegoat. That's where our word comes from, that's where the idea comes from. This is the Old Covenant, Old Testament background to what happened in the death of Christ. Let me explain, let me elaborate a little more on what happens here in yom kippur, the day of atonement. The high priest, beginning with Aaron, and then all the descendants of Aaron after that, are going one time a year to go and make sin and offering for the people. He would take two goats, and by casting lots for them, basically what we consider rolling dice, right? By casting lots for them, one goat would be considered the goat for the Lord, and the other would be considered the scapegoat. The goat for the Lord would be taken into the inner sanctum, the holy of holies, where only the high priest could go one time a year. And that goat would be sacrificed, and His blood would be sprinkled on that mercy seat to make an offering for the sins of the people. That's what propitiation means, an offering for, a payment for the sins of the people. The second goat, the high priest, beginning with Aaron, would then lay his hands on the head of that goat, symbolically transferring all the sins of the people onto that goat. And then it would be sent out into the wilderness, outside the camp, symbolically in itself bearing away the sins of the people. So, the one goat pays for their sins, makes payment for their sins. The second goat then, symbolically, bears them away, carries them away outside the camp. The New Testament letter to the Hebrews, which is obviously the most Jewish of all the New Testament books, although they're all Jewish. Luke was the only non-Jewish writer in the New Testament. He wrote Luke and Acts. All the other writers are Jewish and informed by their Judaism. But the writer to the Hebrews, the letter to the Hebrews, we don't know who that was. The writer to the letter to the Hebrews says this in chapter 10, verses 1 through 4. For the law, since it has only a shadow of the good things to come, and not the very form of things, can never by the same sacrifices which they offer continually, year by year, make perfect those who draw near. Otherwise, would they not have ceased to be offered, because the worshippers, having once been cleansed, would no longer have had consciousness of sins? But in those sacrifices, there is a reminder of sins year by year. For it is impossible for the blood of bulls and goats to take away sins. And then a little later on, in that same letter to the Hebrews, and that whole chapter, chapter 10 bears light on it, but I'm not gonna take the time to read it all to you tonight, you can. And a little later on, that same letter to the Hebrews, the writer says, for the bodies of those animals whose blood is brought into the holy place by the high priest as an offering for sin are burned outside the camp. Therefore, Jesus also, that He might sanctify the people through His own blood, suffered outside the gate. So let us go out to Him outside the camp, bearing His reproach. For here we do not have a lasting city, but we are seeking the city which is to come. Do you get the symbolism? I hope it's very obvious to you that Jesus, the sacrificial lamb, John the Baptist looked at Him before He, before His suffering and death, and said, behold, the lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world. That Jesus in Himself became both the sacrificial lamb, analogous to the goat that Aaron took into the high holy place, and also the scapegoat, because He had no sin, He took our sins. And He died on the cross at Golgotha, which is outside the city of Jerusalem. Symbolically, outside the camp, outside the camp, symbolically taking away sins of the people. He pays for our sins, and He bears them away. It's amazing. It's amazing what God has done for His people in the death of Christ, how He has done it and why He has done it. I've quoted to you a few times before, the great reformed theologian, Scotsman by birth, Scotsman by heritage, anyway, John Murray. John Murray says this. God loved the objects of His wrath so much, that He gave His own Son, to the end that He by His blood should make provision for the removal of His wrath. Isn't that amazing? That God would love us so much, that He would sacrifice His own Son, so that by His blood, He would pay for our sins, and He would bear them away, bear them away. Let me just go to another quote from Tim Keller, because I think it's quite profound. So I guess, when I set these slides in motion, I don't realize that I'm going to cover something, so. God does not set His justice aside, He turns it on to Himself. On the cross, the wrath and love of God were both vindicated, both demonstrated, and both expressed perfectly. The wonder of the cross is that in the very same stroke, it satisfied both the love of God and the justice of God. Isn't that amazing? That God would be able to, at one, the same time, one, the same act, perfectly express both His love and mercy, and His wrath and justice? I mean, I've said this before, but it bears repeating, that is the wonder and the horror and the wonder of the cross of Christ. Once we were separated from God by our sins, far away from Him, and in Christ, He has found a way, and there was no other way, He's found a way to bring us near by drawing us through the sacrificial, atoning death of His Son, Jesus, the perfect, spotless Lamb of God. Paul, who had once killed those who preached forgiveness through Christ, now receives a forgiveness that only Christ can give. He had thought that they were filthy and objectionable in God's sight. Now he realizes how filthy and objectionable He has been in God's sight. And so, again, he, this is what drives his ministry for the rest of his life, and I just think, I have no better way to put it, than he's just stunned by grace. He spends the rest of his life trying to find ways to preach it, to teach it, to manifest it to other people, and to put it into words, including in letters like this incredible letter to the Romans. Now, I'm running out of time, so let me move down the, let me move down the text a little bit. Verse 28, I'm sorry, verse 27. Paul then says, where then is boasting? Is excluded. We bring nothing to the, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Is excluded by what kind of law? Works, no, but by a law of faith. In other words, Paul says, what exactly do we have to brag about? I mean, really, what do we bring to our salvation? We bring nothing to the party, other than our bare, empty, and filthy little hands, and we come to the cross where Christ's blood was shed to cleanse us. We don't bring anything to it. So Paul says, don't brag about it. And then, again, flipping to chapter three, he gives his own testimony, which is extremely impressive. Here's who I was, born in Tarsus, extraordinarily highly educated, a Hebrew of Hebrews, a Pharisee of Pharisees, ass to the law flawless, all these sorts of things. Gives all these credentials. And then he says, and I consider it all, and we translated rubbish. The word he uses there, we translated faithfully, is a lot crasser and coarser than that. I will not tell you what it is, but you can use your own imagination, and you're probably right. He says it's filth, in view of the surpassing greatness of the Lord in Christ. Those things aren't bad, all your credentials, all your accomplishments, they're not bad. But they're not much compared to what Christ has done for us. In fact, they don't do anything for us in view of our salvation. So, Paul goes on to say that, in terms of boasting about what it is we've done, he says, sorry, jumping ahead to give you another great quote from Schaefer. Let me go over verse 28, just because, again, time's fleeting. Verse 28, for we maintain that a man is justified by faith apart from works of the law. For we maintain that a man is justified by faith apart from works of the law. This, again, is a gospel miniature. And this is one of the verses that absolutely liberated Luther, as he was banging his head against his inability to please God, his inability to do enough to satisfy what he perceived to be the requirements of God. This verse, I'll read it again, for we maintain that a man is justified by faith apart from works of the law. I mean, you can't, you can't make it much more plain than that. Here's what Francis Schaefer has to say about it. This is Paul's great conclusion, and this verse was so very crucial to Martin Luther's understanding of the gospel. Considering that Luther lived after hundreds of years of the Church's emphasis on works, and during a time of increasing humanism, you can see why this verse became his great cry. This was Luther's verse, and it should be ours as well. This should smash any cold orthodoxy, just like a dish being smashed on the floor. Let me give you a paraphrase, the Keller, the Camp Keller translation of verse 28. If we could be holy and righteous in God's eyes by our own acts, our rights, by our own efforts, He would let us, He would let us, He would never sacrificed His own Son to do something for us that we really could do on our own if we tried really hard. I mean, I have four kids. They're all grown children now, but they're still hideous my kids, right? And they're all grown, and on any given day, we may be getting along really, really well, and we may not be getting along really, really well. I remind all of them that I have a list of my top four favorite children. And depending on how you behave, you may be moving up or down that list, just letting them know, you know, keeping them on their toes. But I love my kids with all my heart, and there's nothing I would not do for them if I could do it and I thought it was in their best interest. And if you ever came to me and said, hey, man, I'm in real trouble here. I've got such a huge debt I can't pay off. I mean, it's gonna take me the rest of my life to pay it off. I have to work two and three jobs if I can ever get more job. I mean, that's, it's gonna be incredibly hard for me to pay off my debt. How about, how about if you just give up one of your kids to pay my debt? What do you think I'm gonna say? I mean, the parts I can repeat now. In a word, no. They're my kids. I love my kids more than I love my own life, very sincerely. And I'm not sacrificing them for anybody's debt. I'm not sacrificing them for everybody's debt. The whole wide world was in crisis, and they came to me and said, well, we just need you to kill one of your kids. And we're like, I'm sorry, you're all toast. And yet God has one Son. He sacrificed Him to the sins of the world. It is just, just such an amazing, amazing thing. Amazing grace, you know? Maybe we should all be a lot more amazed than we usually are. I know I should be more amazed than I usually am. Paul elaborates on this in his letter to the Philippians. Let me just give you a couple of verses here. So then, my beloved, just as you have always obeyed, not only in my presence only, not as in my presence only, but now much more in my absence. Work out your salvation with fear and trembling. Oh, it sounds like works to me, try really hard. Verse 13. For it is God who is at work in you, both to will and to work for His good pleasure. He's doing it. He's doing it in you and through you. I know you feel like it's a strain a lot of times, I do, too. But it's God who's doing it in us. He gives us the will to do it, and He gives us the ability to do it. So relax, you're gonna make it. Why, because you're so spiritual? No, because God says, God promises, you're gonna make it. All right, again, I know that the time is fleeting. right, again, I know that the time is fleeting, so I'm, I'm moving rapidly here. Paul elaborates on this whole doctrine of justification by faith, and that works a lot in his letter to the Galatians. Let me give you just a little bit of that, okay? Galatians, this is from the third chapter, verses 6 through 8. And then I'm going to jump down the page a little bit. "Even so Abraham believed God, and it was reckoned to him as righteousness." By the way, that's Genesis 15, 6. If you don't know anything else in Genesis, I hope you'll know that. "Even so Abraham believed God, and it was reckoned to him as righteousness. Therefore, be sure that it is those who are of faith who are sons of Abraham. The Scripture foreseen that God would justify the Gentiles by faith preached the gospel beforehand to Abraham, saying, all the nations will be blessed in you. So then those who are of faith are blessed with Abraham, the believer." And then moving down the page a little bit to verse 24. "Therefore, the law has become our tutor to lead us to Christ, so we may be justified by faith." What's the purpose of the law for the Christian today? Well, it has more than one, but primarily it is to be our tutor, to lead us to Christ, so we may be justified by faith. But now that faith has come, you are no longer under a tutor. For you are all sons of God through faith in Christ Jesus. For all of you who were baptized into Christ have clothed yourself, yourselves with Christ. Let me, let me again translate for you. How many ways are there to be made right with God? Just one. There's just one. It's not works. It's not by your ethnic heritage or lack thereof. The only, the only way to be made right with God is through faith, through faith in Christ alone. And I should stress here, because Paul says here, it is not your faith that saves you, because then you could claim some credit. And I've got faith and that's what I'm saying. No. It is Christ who saves you. And your faith in Christ, through which the grace of God flows in the transaction of your salvation, your faith in Christ is a gift of God. Because you don't have saving faith on your own. If you did, you could take some credit for it. It is the gift of God, so that no one should boast. Works, faith. Faith is a conduit through which God's grace, His saving grace flows to us. And His grace and our faith and our salvation are all gifts of God's grace. How many ways are there to be made right with God? There's just one. For Jew and Gentile, for Roman Catholic, for Eastern Orthodox, for Protestant, for, for conservative, for liberal, for reform, for Pentecostal, fundamentalist, you name it. There's one way to be made right with Christ, made right with God, and that's Christ and His death and His atoning sacrifice on the cross for us. That's it. That's one. That's it. That's all, the only way there is. That sounds very exclusive. I'll just remind you again, if you're about to be burned to death inside of a burning home, a burning building, somebody comes in and saves you and carries you out of that building, you don't have to turn around and save him. You know, you really should have made more fire exits. You really should have made more ways out of this thing. No, you say, thank you for saving me from certain death. That's what Christ has done for us. That's what God has done for us in Christ. Okay, I know, I know the time is, is, is come to an end. If you're still with me, thank you for staying with me. Just to act like I'm educated, which I'm probably not much more than the average person you meet, but just to act like I am, I want to close this with a great, great quote from Shakespeare. One of my professors, Jerome Barz, who's an absolute delight professor at Covenant Theological Center in St. Louis, and the, the executive director of the Francis Schaefer Institute there in, in St. Louis. He says that Shakespeare, I mean, Shakespeare was a Bible-believing Christian. His worldview was formed by the Bible, which at that time, by the way, was the King James Bible. It's the only one they had. You could have said it was the new King James, because it was the only King James. It was fairly new. Shakespeare wrote from a biblical and Christian worldview. And this is what he has, he has the character Portia say to Shylock in The Merchant of Venice. And this is from, from Portia to Shylock. And this is quite beautiful. "The quality of mercy is not strained. It droppeth as a gentle rain from heaven upon the place beneath. It is twice blessed. It blesseth him that gives and him that takes. 'Tis mightiest in the mightiest. It becomes the throned monarch better than his crown. His scepter shows the force of temporal power, the attribute to awe and majesty. The attribute to awe and majesty wherein doth sit the dread and fear of kings. But mercy is above this sceptered sway. It is enthroned in the hearts of kings. It is an attribute of God Himself. And earthly power doth then show like gods when mercy seasons justice." I can't top the bar of Avon, so let's pray. Father, we thank you for your mercy. And we even thank you for your justice. Without your justice, this world would be, well, the inmates would be running asylum even more than they already are, even more than we already are. Thank you for your mercy. Thank you for your justice. Thank you for your grace. Thank you for Jesus, in whose name I pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. See you either Sunday morning or next Wednesday night.